Okay, we're at seven.
All right, great. I will now call the Estacada City Council to order. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have roll call city, please.
Counselor Dunsmir. Counselor Gates.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Lidkey.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Drinkling.
Here, thank you very much Sadie. Moving along, we are at the Citizen and Community Group Comment, one of two. First, is there anybody in the hole?
Mayor, before we jump into that, can I, can I say something real quick?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
This, I want to bring this up real quick about the, uh, something we have on the agenda today. It's the Arts and Diversity Committee Appointments. So, um, these, I want, I was looking up, I can't find anything on, um, on our website. I can't find anything on our Facebook. I can't find anything in the newspaper. I can't find anywhere where these particular openings were announced and where they were brought forward. And so, I'm a little bit concerned because if the community doesn't know that these are open, how are they going to be able to apply for them? And I would like to, I'd like to know where these were posted, when they were posted, and if need be. Since I can't find it myself, I think we need to reopen this back out and do a much better job at identifying to the community where these postings are at. Putting like, it's not on our city news feed. Um, I went back about four months into our Facebook. I can't find anything anywhere about where these openings are. So, and it's, it's a little bit concerning because the community wants to be involved in these committees, but they're not being shared anywhere. So, um, honestly, uh, I would like to make a motion right now that we actually open these back up.
Let's let Sadie, um, tell you where it was posted and what paper it was in.
Yeah.
Before we.
Oh, go ahead Sadie.
Yeah, go ahead Sadie.
Um, yeah, so it was posted on our website on July fifteenth. And then I think Melanie shared it on Facebook on July twenty-second. It was in the newspaper on July twenty-second and the Chamber Chatter on July twenty-second.
Well, I went through and, um, I looked back on our website through our news feed, through our new stuff. It's nowhere in there.
It's unpublished now that it was taken off.
Well, I.
But it won't show.
When was it taken off? Cause I, I look back on.
At five PM on, uh, July twenty-ninth, which was the deadline.
Okay, um, so it was on, you're saying it's on our website. Um, we should be keeping, by the way, the history on our website there.
I have, I have the history. I print that out.
And so you're saying it's on our Facebook page too, cause I didn't see it anywhere on the Facebook page.
Um, yeah, Melanie, I think, put it on, on this twenty-second.
All right. And the reason why I'm also bringing this up, I had three people contact me that they wanted to apply for specifically the DEIC. They never saw anything about it and they've been looking for it, uh, for about two weeks now. And so that's also my concern. When I went back to look at everything, it's not there. So, I, I think, one, we need to make sure we always bring that up and put that out there. And two, it's, there's no deadline dates anywhere posted on the, on the applications. Like I said, on anything else I found out there, there should be these app, these deadlines posted out there so people know when the stuff closes.
Yeah, it was just, it was in the announcement. But once.
And she can share those with you guys. She can send what she sent to the newspaper and what she put online.
I don't have to send it to the newspaper anymore. They pull it from our website. So that's how it got put in there. So I don't, I don't pay for it.
Sure, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I think this was kind of, I think we kind of ran into this issue, um, earlier in the year with, um, one of the other committees. Is there like a staff, like a time that, that these jobs are, are, that these committee positions are open? Is it like a two-week period or a one week?
Yeah. So we.
I was on vacation, so I thought this all happened while I was gone and this.
I mean, normally, you know, they, the terms are ended at the end of the year. So every December, we always have a number of terms up. But when someone resigns, we just put that out for a couple of weeks. And then we, you know, set a deadline for that. So people resign at different times during the year. And, you know, I mean, we had, what mayor, we had like five, five applications for one and three for the other. So definitely the word was out there because we got eight, you know, applications, which really is good for us. There's been times where we received no applications and we did have to extend it, but this wasn't one of those times, so.
Jerry, did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I, I saw it on Facebook a couple of times. I saw it come up. We also announced it at the city council meeting, um, last, the last meeting. And, uh, you know, and I did see it on the website. So, I mean, uh, we.
The city did their job.
Still on the website, Jerry.
Where's in the website? Cause I looked at it myself.
City of Estacada Government. There are volunteer opportunities on the Estacada Area Arts Commission. It's all on there.
Yeah, I scoured the website this morning and I didn't see it. I mean, I took screenshots in case there was questions.
Like literally just opened it up and looked for it. It's there. July twenty-second at nine fifty.
Under our main one, cause this is a concern, cause this, this has, as Charity mentioned, this was an issue in the past.
I would, I totally would agree with you if it actually did get posted, but it looks like it.
July twenty-second, uh, what time?
Nine fifty AM. I see it.
Cause I'm looking at our news, um, and I'm happy to share my screen to show you guys. It's not anywhere on here, so.
I could actually do it too.
Yeah, by all means, I'd like to see where you're looking because, uh, like I said, several people have been watching for this for weeks and then they, they were shocked to see on the thing today that we're voting on it and they're like, well, when was it open? Cause I couldn't even put an application in, so.
Yeah, Justin, you have any way of putting that up? Does anybody have a way of putting that up? Thank you.
I think it should be.
So that's on the Facebook page.
Definitely there.
Yeah, Justin, this is our Facebook page, which was a link to our website.
Yeah.
Um, yep, exactly. And that's what got unpublished on the, after the deadline.
Yeah, which makes sense.
I went through the, I went through piece by piece. I'd like to see if I can even see that on there. Um, seriously, this is because it's an issue for me, cause I couldn't even validate to these people. Like, yeah, I don't see it on there, so it's an issue.
Oh, so, so Joel, you said they knew there was an opening, but they didn't realize they could apply for it?
No, they have been wanting to apply because they had heard that someone was resigning from the committee. Um, and they wanted, they're waiting for to see the announcement that it was open so they could apply for it.
Yeah, they, they just, when they hear something like that, they need to give City Hall a call. I don't think we received any calls from.
No, they're just waiting for it to come out, so.
Well, they should be proactive and call us, yeah.
Yeah, it was definitely posted from this. I can see that.
So I can't argue the fact it's on Facebook there, so.
Yeah, no, we, uh, we did our due diligence and we appreciate that. Maybe in the future, we'll try to pump it out just a little bit more so everybody gets a chance. But it looks to me like it was out there and it was definitely, um, looked at. So I, I appreciate that Joel, uh, bringing that to our attention.
Can I ask that we put the deadlines on our, on our applications next time? Cause they're not on the applications anywhere, so.
Um, on our applications, we use the same application online. They just call it up online. It, you know, the application doesn't change for each, but there is an attachment to each application usually that has the, the message from the, uh, advertisement with it. So it's like a separate page, but it's usually there, so.
Yeah, we, we include a link to the application on the announcement page. So it would be there. It just wouldn't be stated on the actual application they fill out, cause it's a blanket.
Okay, the second question is, uh, well, it's still, I think it's a good idea to put it on there because people pull those things down or they hand, they pass it to somebody. The other part is on the actual committee page, can you guys put the deadlines there as well? So that when people are visiting the committee page looking for it and that, I know you can get the application from there, there's no deadlines there as well. I'm just saying, being out there because people go to different places. Um, like I said, obviously I've had three people that missed the Fa, the Facebook one. They didn't see it on the website. Um, so, but yeah, I just.
Try to post it in more places on the website, for sure.
Um, and I think the second thing I'd like to ask is, I didn't know anything about the vacancies myself until last council meeting. Can we let counselors know about the vacancies before they're made public as well? So.
Yeah, I mean, we can try to. That's an administrative. It's not a legislative act, so it's hard to, you know, let the council know every little thing. That's really a small thing in our city to have to try to remember, but you know, when we get a resignation, we can try to remember to forward it to the council.
Well, I would think that the fact is that it comes through for a vote of the, of the council and the, the mayor has to appoint it, that it would fall under that area that we should know around the bat. So we can encourage people to apply and we can put it out there so that they, we get, you know, so that, that we can have a good, good set.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, but we'll definitely get it out there more. Jerry, you want to say one more thing before we move on?
I'll just, uh, reply to that. Um, I, I told everybody, uh, three, two or three meetings ago that Gene, um, resigned from Arts Commission. So, I mean, I, uh, the one I, the one I knew about, I let you guys know as soon as I knew, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Okay, uh, Sadie, is there anybody else in the holding to?
I do have one hand raised. Let me, oh, I have two. I have Tony and Jim. So I'll go with Tony first.
All right.
There we go. And Tony, if you can just state your full name for the record and city of residence, and you'll have three minutes. You're on mute.
Your sound on.
Ah, can you hear me now, guys?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Awesome. Tony from, actually just moved, uh, ten fifty-four, uh, Reagan Hill Loop. Oh, well, I just told you the whole thing. So there you go. Um, so hey, I just wanted to comment on, uh, the IC and I was actually one of the ones that missed it. Uh, I can attribute that to probably the reason why I would join the DEIC is because of my vision. Um, and that is the, the main reason, uh, why I would join these EIC or even be interested. So I was one of those that looked for it, um, and actually word of mouth, uh, kind of got me there. Um, but really didn't take me there. I think I'm a day late, dollar short, or maybe not even a day late, but a dollar short, because I did not find it anywhere. Um, and so I, if there is something that we can do to maybe make it accessible to people that might, uh, access information in a different way, uh, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Tony.
Yeah.
Okay, Sadie, next.
Okay, I'll bring Jim in.
Okay. Hey, Jim, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Hi, this is Jim Moriarty. Uh, so.
How are you, sir?
Good. Uh, I don't want to keep up much of your time. I know you have seven hundred and ninety-four pages to go, so I'll keep you to a minute. I just wanted to invite everyone to the American Legion Seventh Annual Cruising at, uh, at the Viewpoint Restaurant this coming Saturday.
Looking forward to that.
Uh, from ten to three, we're gonna have some raffle prizes, some music, and we're gonna be raffling off one thousand dollars in cash prizes. And again, we're gonna have eighteen categories and I just want to thank all the participants and the trophies and all the people in Estacada that have supported us so far this year. It's, uh, been an amazing year and I appreciate it. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Just have a good night.
You too. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is that everybody I have?
Yep.
All right, thank you. And we're moving right along to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read it over. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? No? Can I have a motion to accept the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a first.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, we are at Department of Committee Reports, so I will start off with you, Jerry. Do you have anything from your group that you, which discussed?
So, did you say Charity or Jerry?
Uh, Jerry.
Oh. Um, Arts Commission, uh, the meeting went really well. They, uh, they discussed, they had a meet and greet with the, the applicants. Um, it was real, really good questions asked, really good answers. Um, you know, went pretty well. Um, they had a pretty successful, uh, the Estacada Chalk Walk. I don't know if you guys saw the pictures on Facebook, the hashtag Estacada Chalk Walk. It was, there was some really good stuff. And, um, if you had a chance to go down to see the professional art done, done on, uh, uh, down on Broadway, it was, it was amazing. Um, but yeah, that's, that's all I got right now.
Um, can you tell me a little bit about what they're doing on the Dollar General? I saw that the, somebody was painting white on that last panel.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're prepping it for the, for the next mural. Uh, Carl, Carl was probably out there priming it. Uh, priming the spot so they can start painting the next mural. But yeah, that's the, um, the art, art back has, uh, the next mural going up at that spot.
Great, thank you. All right, uh, Joel, do you have anything? No? Okay, Justin?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, uh, Charity?
Not this time. I will next time.
Okay, um, Paul?
None for me either this time around.
All right, well, I, uh, attended the, uh, mayor's, um, convention. Uh, thanks to all of you. I appreciate that. There was a lot of good information, a lot of things going on out there. That was, uh, really exciting to see all the new mayors. There's several of them. Um, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to go to that and, uh, there's, there's a lot of good things out there. I, I have a feeling a lot of cities are doing some building and they're using, I, I heard a lot of cities using urban renewal and we know what that's like. Um, so it was, it was really good. The only thing that was kind of strange is in the casino, when it came down, the governor called the, the mask. He didn't mandate it, but then the casino was on, uh, mask and the hotel was not. So it was kind of strange. You walked through a door, you had to wear a mask. I don't get it. But it was different. It was different. But I appreciate the opportunity to go, so I thank you for that. Um, and then City Managers Report.
Button, find my mute button. So we finally got our in-water permit for Wake Creek Park, so they're going full. I don't know if any of you have the chance to drive by and see how they, um, made, how they made this, diverted the stream. They have the, a big plastic pipe that they put in and put it under the road and then kind of aside the pond and out the, um, the outfall area. It's really, you should go in there and take a look at that. It's very interesting. Um, they've, they have been doing a lot of work. They got four hundred and eighty-four fish, uh, rescued out of the, they, that's a requirement. You can't just cut off the water. You have to rescue anything that's in there. So that was interesting, the different types of fish and, and wildlife in there. All the ducks, um, the delay actually made it so the younger ducks were old enough to get out of there. So all the ducks are out of there. There's a couple that visit occasionally, but they don't stick around with all the work going on. Anyway, it'll be really interesting to see that job get going and, and, um, getting, getting that done. It's a, I'm glad to see it going. Um, we're going out to bid for the ginseng project that was in the budget. We're paving, we're grinding and paving ginseng street, the whole length of that this year. Um, trying to save the roads that we can before they're bad enough that you have to actually reconstruct them. So ginseng will be completely paved this year. Um, and then, uh, we kind of wanted, I wanted to get a HNA update to you guys. So Taylor is gonna step in here for a minute and just give you an update where we are with the housing needs analysis that we're in the process of doing. So Taylor, do you want to give a quick update?
Yeah, I'll try to be quick and I'll, I also would like to just welcome, um, anybody to shoot me an email if there's questions you have about the HNA process. Um, we are really at the, just at the very beginning, the consultants have come out with the drafts of the housing needs projection, which is the population projections. And then the, um, buildable lands inventory. So those are in draft form and, um, they are, we're having an, an online open house, um, which is the first of two community, um, you know, public engagement events. The online open house will be, um, activated either on Friday or on Monday, um, and it'll be open for two weeks. So that'll be an opportunity for, um, community members to give input on those first two initial draft documents. Um, community members, including counselors. I hope you will all, um, log on there and participate. Um, and there are other survey questions related to kind of housing need and preference in the city and things like that. Um, I don't think I was present at whichever council meeting this conversation came up at, but, um, I know there were some questions about the PSU population forecast and how, um, it seems, it seems highly likely that it is under, you know, underestimating the growth that's actually gonna happen in Estacada. And so what we, one of the things that we're getting, um, from the consultants is an alternative forecast based on some more like local, local knowledge and, you know, input from staff, decision makers, community members, and, um, looking at more recent, you know, the, just a, a more recent growth rate than what the PSU, um, which is really what, what the state is prescribing us to use. So we are getting both the, the required PSU estimate, we are required to do that. Um, and we're also getting this alternative, more likely to be accurate, um, forecast. So those are two things that, um, you all can hopefully provide input for the, uh, consultants on. Um, and that'll help them update those drafts, taking into account, um, some of that input and, uh, hopefully making those forecasts even more accurate. So there is that. Um, like I said, the online open house will be open for, um, about two weeks and information on that will be posted on the city's website, on Facebook and the paper. Um, so keep an eye out for that. And then lastly, we are, um, applying for, I found out that, um, DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, um, got some sort of surprise extra funding, uh, this grant cycle. And so they reopened these grants that they had available, um, to a, a broader set of jurisdictions. And so, um, we were not eligible for the first round of those grants, cause they thought they had less money. Um, and we aren't required to do the House Bill two thousand and one, two thousand and three stuff like larger cities are. Um, but they reopened that grant opportunity and now we are eligible for the funding. And so, um, even though we've started the HNA process, uh, I was told by the DLCD Housing Specialist, um, that we can still apply for this grant and, uh, basically submit the scope of work for the project that we've already started. And, um, we are, I don't want to say guaranteed, obviously, but, um, we would likely, uh, get that grant money. So we can get part or all of the HNA project funded. So that's free money from the state, basically. Um, and we do need, um, like council, like a letter of support or resolution from the council. So that'll be in your next packet, will be that letter of support that, um, you'll just have to approve and sign. And then that gets submitted by the, um, thirty-first of this month. So we'll find out hopefully in September, but maybe October, cause the state is slow, um, whether or not we got free money. So that's it from me. I don't know if I.
Some good news, uh, Paul?
When did you say that online open house starts and, and what is that? Do you know, is that an open forum? Or is there gonna be questions, fill-in-the-blank kind of things? Can you give us any idea about that?
Yeah, um, so there will be a few, a few videos kind of going through those draft documents and explaining the materials, explaining what a housing needs analysis is. Um, and then, yeah, the sort of Estacada specific numbers that we're looking at. Um, and then all of, all of that information will also be in, available in text form. It's just that some people have an easier time hearing it explained, so there are the video explanations there. Um, there will be some like, I don't know if this is the one where we'll have the interactive mapping or not, um, but there will be like images of the different types of housing, um, that they'll be asking you about. And then there will be some survey questions kind of embedded throughout the activity there. Um, it sounds like it's gonna be, I, I haven't seen it yet, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure, but it sounds like it's gonna be like pages that you click, you've progressed through and there'll be some questions embedded along the way. And then, um, a final section that's maybe some more, um, more detailed questions that you might have to type a response to or, um, multiple choice or something like that. And then, I don't know if I answered the first part of that. It will be open by Monday. It might be open by Friday if we're lucky. But if not, then it'll be open by Monday and it'll be available for two weeks.
Yeah, we're really excited about the grant funding that we, uh, we could possibly receive, so, um. Yeah, and so if anyone has any questions, just, uh, email Taylor, hertzcampy@cityinvestigated.org or give her a call. But email is better so she can re, if she needs the research, she has your question exactly as, as you ask it, so.
Well, thank you, Taylor. That was great presentation.
And then my final thing, I sent an email out earlier today and I've talked to staff. I have decided that I'm retiring and February third is gonna be my last day with the city after, by that time it'll be thirty-four years.
Don't tell people, thirty-four years.
Yeah. And so, uh, at your next meeting, we'll have a discussion on how we want to proceed. Um, we're gonna look at different options on, you know, how we can recruit and different, um, uh, organizations that can help you with that. And so we'll have that discussion. You have to have a discussion when a city, when you're advertising for a city manager. It's in our charter. It's in the state thing. So, um, what you're looking for and how you're gonna do it, so.
All right, great. Jerry, did you have a question?
Yeah, can, can we just reject the letter of resignation?
No. I don't know if I'll give you a letter to reject.
She's looking forward to it. She's glad, Jerry. She's out of here.
I am. And that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Um, is there any other things anybody wishes to discuss before I move on? Okay, thank you. We are now in the, uh, public hearing part of this. So I will now open the public hearing, or close the city council and then open the public hearing, um, for the subdivision twenty twenty-one dash zero four dash S, Duke and Estates Phase One and Two. So I will hand that off to staff to talk about them.
Thank you. I'm just gonna share my screen really quick. Okay, I think, I assume everyone can see that. Uh, Ben Blessing, uh, city staff, city planner. Uh, thank you and good evening. Uh, I was staff contact for the Dugan Estates subdivision phases one and two. So a brief summary, this is a hundred and two lot low-density residential subdivision. It's in the R1 zoning district, so that means the lots cannot go below seven thousand five hundred square feet and no lot as proposed has. Uh, there'll be two open space tracks that will contain Kern Creek and Sailing Creek. Uh, there'll be an extension of Northeast Kern Creek Drive, which is a major collector, and, uh, Sweetwater Road as, which is a minor collector. So there's also a pedestrian trail closed within, uh, the open space track that will contain Sailing Creek. And there'll be a little more detail on, uh, following slide for that. Just to get you oriented, a vicinity map, subject property is about thirty-one acres. Directly to the east, of course, is the Faraday Hills subdivision and planned unit development that was, uh, approved last year. You'll remember. Uh, just a quick summary of the property, uh, again, zoned R1, thirty-one acres. Uh, it's generally flat, crossed by Sailing and Kern Creeks. Uh, and it's just generally, uh, a relatively flat, open, um, kind of. Uh, and it's just generally a relatively flat, open, um, kind of meadow and mixed trees. And apart from the, the river features, it's just generally flat, river and creek features, that is. So just some vicinity properties, about a mile from, a mile, about a mile to the high school, mile to Eagle Creek road and a one and a half miles to City Hall. Again, just a quick zoomed in view of Sailing Creek. You can see it's, uh, it, it'll, it has a riparian corridor that will be protected with a 50 foot buffer as well as a 25 foot tract. Uh, so that would, uh, that, that'll be, that vegetation should be retained. An existing conditions map, again, relatively flat. You have wetlands down, all the, this area, which I'm sorry, is, is rotated. Um, the area to the south, which is what this is, uh, has wetlands associated with Kern Creek. And they're all contained in an open space tract. And that's also where stormwater will be discharged and, and cleaned and infiltrated and so forth for half the subdivision, with the other half being cleaned and infiltrated up on Sailing Creek, which I'll show you now. So again, this, this direction is north to the left of the image. That's the proposed detention pond. And then again, you have another proposed detention pond on the other side of the property and, and that'll treat the stormwater. Then there again is your layout. I'm sure it's, nothing's readable at this scale, but you do have 102 lots. All the lots show as 7,500 square feet or more. This is a circulation plan. Again, as mentioned, you had Faraday Hills to the east. And to the west, you see future subdivisions that haven't been approved yet. Particularly up to the northeast, which will be future phases and future proposals. Uh, but there is fairly good connection with existing approved subdivisions as well as some conceptual proposed subdivisions that'll be in the future. Uh, so the transportation system plan has called for a minor arterial connection to Deuce Road. Uh, with this proposal, the applicant has made that, that has proposed that that route be through Sweetwater Road, which of course is the, the, the westernmost road in this subdivision that, that, you know, joins the Faraday subdivision. So they've proposed that as the minor collector. So that alignment will, uh, if approved by the council will be, will be selected. And that'll be the connection to Deuce Road. Uh, just to, uh, kind of to show Track D, this is the track containing Sailing Creek. Again, it's a 25 foot trap and a, as well as a 50 foot buffer to give it a little more riparian, a little more riparian protection. And then of course you have the track being conveyed to the city. Obviously you have the stormwater pond in there again. And there will be a trail that'll be installed eight to 10 feet as a condition of approval, assuming it's approved by the council. Uh, just a few highlights, just about the layout overall. The block lengths were met the city standard, maximum block, block length is 60, sorry, 600 linear feet. Each lot met that except for this lot, which starts at lot nine. It slightly exceeded that and to mitigate that, the applicants proposed a 15 foot pedestrian easement, which will be, you know, built as a condition of approval and maintained by the city. Uh, so just some quick, these are just some highlighted, recommended conditions to, the, the condition is to approve Northeast Kern Creek Drive as a major collector, 66 foot wide right of way, two 12 foot travel lanes, two six foot bike lanes, one eight foot parking lane, which will be on one side of the street. And then of course, uh, two landscape strip, planner strips, curbs and sidewalks on both sides of the streets. Northwest, Northeast Sweetwater Road is minor collector. Again, it's, it's going to be from Kern Creek Drive to, to Deuce Road. And that's proposed at a 49 foot right of way, two 11 foot travel lanes, two five foot bike lanes, one eight foot parking lane on one side of the street, curbs and sidewalks, both sides of the street. And, uh, we also recommend a typical local street cross section, 54 feet parking on, parking planner strip and sidewalks on both sides. We have a condition recommended for fire district approval for the final design. Uh, the geotechnical requirement for the site is recommended as a condition of approval as well because there are some, the Bulletin 99 maps, which are the authority, show that there are what are called high shrink swell soils. Basically that, that means there, it's a possibility for some high, possible high water table. And so the, the geotechnical report will just ensure that foundations are built properly and, and the public roads constructed will be made properly. And, um, subject to the recommendations of a geotechnical engineer. So finally, um, that essentially concludes the summary. And the city council, of course, has options. First is to deny the application. Uh, and it's important to know that if denied, findings that one or more of the approval criteria, criteria are unable to be met will be essential. You also have the second option, approve as recommended by the planning commission on July 22nd, which is of course what you've seen in front of you today. And then the third, approve, but with modified conditions and findings, whatever that may be. Uh, and then finally, these were the noticing, this is, uh, these are the agencies and or divisions noticed number of exhibits. And then of course, the, lastly, the city council decision is next after this. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Is there any correspondence regarding this application?
There, there, nothing, nothing additional has been received, other than the exhibits you have before you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, I will now read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, with the applicant, is the applicant here?
Yes, um, we've got Dave and Mac.
Okay, great.
And Dave, is, is there another person in the audience that I need to bring in?
Uh, Jessica Hyjar from
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I'm trying to figure out, oh, the thing that says start video would probably start the video. Hey, good evening, Mayor Drinkwine. Council, thanks for having us. Dave Reichert, we're with all county surveyors and planners. With me is Ray Moore, he's the PE and PLS for the project. Our address is in Sandy, 39669 Pleasant Street. And I also live in town in Estacada. I live on Heaven Street. If you don't know where Heaven Street is, just remember if you want to get to Heaven Street first, you gotta go up Cemetery Road.
That's it.
Um, so I'm the lead designer in this project. I'm working on land use planning, surveying, civil engineering, the parks, all the different angles of this project. I've taken it, I've taken it very seriously. I drive to work every day on the Old Eagle Creek Highway, look off to my right and think about what's, what's it going to look like over there? So I'm, I, like I said, I take it seriously. I'm designing a neighborhood that's going to be a part of my town. It's going to be a part of our, our town. So over the past several months, I've sat in on several planning commission meetings and city council meetings, a parks commission meeting. Uh, just doing a lot of listening, trying to understand the big picture, how our project fits into the big picture. Um, I was at the last city council meeting two weeks ago, just listening and learning, uh, nice lively discussions, uh, which I, which I like. And it's, I, I think it's awesome that so many people are involved and so many committees, so many people care. It's, it's kind of humbling to me, if you know what I mean. And I'm thankful for that in general. And I am also thankful to all of you for, for what you do for our town. Um, I'm also thankful for, to city staff. Um, so what you, what you see before you, what Ben presented is, uh, it's a product of a lot of collaboration that's happened already. So I do want to specifically thank Ben, as well as Taylor, Denise and Melanie and Hassan and Kurt for all their input and correspondence with this project. Uh, so these people are great to work with. So what I want to address is, is I guess first some big picture things, some of my thoughts and some of the big picture. And before I get into some of the specifics about our project, let's see, so there's a, there's a couple of things about adding new, adding new neighborhoods that are counterintuitive. So regarding schools, for instance, so we've seen in our office, we've seen letters for various projects from the superintendent. I, I watched the superintendent testify before the council here. And I, to me, the superintendent's message has been clear and concise and consistent. The school district welcomes all growth. And that's part, part one of the message. Part two of the message is they need a bond. And, um, so, and I find that those, those two things are independent. Um, the need for the bond and the, the growth that's happening all around us are two independent things. And I say that, I mean, it's my, that bond affects me too. Um, so the school district needs a bond, whether or not, um, this neighborhood comes to life. So the school district's been asking for a bond for, I don't know how many years, you guys know how many years. And, um, if anything, so the counterintuitive part is if anything, our, our development helps, uh, it helps the problem. So a substantial portion of our permit fees go to the schools. A greater population gives the school district access to more government monies. And with an increased population, should the bond ever pass, uh, there'll be more to share the burden with us. So counterintuitively, all this growth helps us with the needs of the school district. Um, second thing is regarding the sanitary system. So there's a couple of different upgrades that are already in the works with the city. One's a treatment plant, one's INI. For the treatment plant, the city engineer has already submitted a, a proposed facilities plan, a DEQ. They've got comments back, it's in this review process. Um, and the city submitted this way before the minimum state requirement. So we're ahead of the game. And as you know, a large chunk of the treatment plant project will be funded by SDC money, which is collected at the time that building permits are pulled. So these new homes are, are going to help pay for our treatment plant upgrades that we would need anyway. The other side, like I said, is, was INI, which as you know, is the, the issue of stormwater getting into the existing sanitary pipes and manholes. So there's, there's far more gallons per day that hit the plant from the INI than from the new homes that are going to be added with this project. So the, the, the city continues to work to fix the INI problem, which is funded in large part by utility bills. The more utility bills we have, the faster we fix INI citywide. So this is, this is counterintuitive, but, but growth actually helps improve the sanitary sewer system. And I'll even quote the city engineer Kurt McLeod in his, his letter to Randy Bailey, the DEQ on October 3rd, 2017. Kurt said, quote, "The city has been working to complete INI repairs for many years and has seen improvement. We do not project that peak wet weather flows will increase as the population increases. With continued efforts to reduce INI and better construction materials, we anticipate the peak day flows and average wet weather flows will decrease as the city expands." And end quote from the city engineer. So specifically with our project, I think at that, at our last meeting, uh, two weeks ago, it was Matt Lorenzen, who, who made a comment, something to the effect of, you know, in our subdivision design process, we, we just look at the code and we look at the zoning and we follow the rules and we design from there. And, uh, and for this one, for our project here, we're not just doing the bare minimum. We've gone above and beyond what the code requires to design what, I mean, what I think is a nice neighborhood. The code says we can create 7,500 square foot lots. That's what we're proposing. Every lot is 7,500 square feet or greater. The code says we need to build city standard streets, city standard sanitary pipes, manholes to connect to the sanitary sewer system, um, to build standard water pipes and valves to connect to the city water system. We've designed all of this for the city standards. The code says, uh, we have to engineer a stormwater management system. Um, we've designed, uh, city standard pipes and manholes and detention ponds to meet the code. And, um, the city transportation system says, um, like the slide that, that Ben had, I said, we need to have a, a collector road to connect from the new Kern Creek Road up to Deuce, which we have designed to again, meet this, the city standard. Um, so now code wise, it's, it's looser when it comes to the parks requirements. Uh, but city staff had asked us in this process to consider park land for our development. Um, so we've collaborated with them extensively, kind of as I mentioned earlier, including a meeting with the city manager, lots and lots of emails with planning staff. Um, I attended a meeting with the Parks Commission. And, and so there's, there's no, there's no parks master plan for this area. So we made one. Um, Ray and I did, and with Mac, with Denise, uh, with the Parks Commission. And so let's, oh, can I share a screen? Let's see, I had asked about it.
Yeah, you should be able to do that, Dave.
Big green button that says share screen. Okay, share. Okay, is that visible?
Yeah.
All right, technology. So, let's see, so we're, we're creating a nice neighborhood. So our project is here circled in red. Um, and this has the beginnings of a trail system that's eventually going to connect to a large playground area. More about the large playground area next month. Um, so, you know, as long as we're doing this, let's, let's make it good. Um, also our, our plan here, um, we're not proposing any HOAs. All the new lots and tracks are going to be clearly owned and maintained by other of the city or the, uh, the individual owners. Uh, so again, I, I just think we've come up with a good plan that goes above and beyond of what the code requires of us. Um, and of course, I mean, our project creates jobs, it creates a housing inventory. It adds to the housing inventory that is truly, uh, it's desperately needed in this lopsided market. And, um, what we've designed, what I think is going to be a pretty cool, uh, place to live. So thanks again for having us. I look forward to being face to face again soon. Before we take questions, I wanted to give an opportunity for Mac even to say a few words, the developer on the project.
Okay, I'm trying to undo my thing. Okay. Hi, how are you? Sorry, I'm always a little worried when I turn the camera on. It's like, okay, how do I really look? My name is Mac Even. I am the developer for this project. And, um, I just wanted to say a little bit about myself and about the project and what we're trying to, trying to do here. I've been a home builder and real estate developer for pretty much my entire adult life. And I grew up out in Boring and my father was a Realtor and he also did some development and home building as well. And, um, this is, you know, I, I consider like Estacada boring, Damascus, Sandy, the home. This is where I grew up. And lately I've had the opportunity to do projects in Sandy and, um, a few projects in Gresham and also in Clackamas, which is great because, um, I'm working in, in the neighborhoods and the areas that I grew up with, with the people that I grew up with. And, uh, I, I think we've built some pretty nice neighborhoods and pretty nice homes for some people. And I'm really looking forward to doing it in Estacada again. Um, when my dad was developing and I first started working with him, the very first subdivision that I ever, uh, got to do on my own was in Estacada. It was uphillway off of Cemetery Road. And, uh, we did that dead end extension up there where the fire turnaround is. And we sold some of the lots, we built some of the homes, but it was a great experience. And this was a wonderful city for me to kind of learn my craft early on. And, um, I have not been able or had the opportunity to do a project out here since then. So I'm really looking forward to it. And, uh, I think Dave and Ray have done a fabulous job on design. You know, and dealing with the constraints of the property that were You know, and dealing with the constraints of the property that we're, that we're working with and, and, you know, really taking opportunities to try to accentuate some of the natural features of it and give the public access to it so they can have good positive use with it. So. I'll be here for the rest of the meeting. I'm going to turn it back over to Dave and let him take over. But if anybody ever has any questions for me throughout the meeting, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Dave, you're on.
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, before I put it up to the counselors, I gotta say, you guys are impressive. Number one, you answered all the questions. You're from and live in the area. That makes a world of difference when you're planning these developments, I have to say. It gives you a better perspective of what we're looking for and how we're looking for it. I'm impressed. I'm impressed that you answered all those questions to almost everything that I would be worried about. And I didn't have to prompt you. You were already on it. So you must have did your homework. So I appreciate that. I'm now going to open it up to the counselors for questions. So Jerry, I'll start off with you.
Okay, hey, Ben, can you pull up, on, in your slide, it was the one that said Track D?
Yeah.
That's a, there, there's a question I had is with Sweetwater Road on that Track D picture.
This one's, this one should be zoomed in right here, that one?
Yeah, okay. So my question is, where to go? Okay, so you guys have the road basically curving and then going out. What, what, why not just continue it up the, you know, straight like it is rather than taking that turn? Is there a reason for that turn? I mean, that's just, it just seems like a lot of open space there either way, either way you go, but a, a straight road always seem, you know, to me is always a better idea than, you know, having a, having a curve in it, so.
That, yeah, that is a good question. And it is, but part of it, oh, I'm sorry. Is it, it's a good question, but it goes back to the adjoining subdivision. And I believe a lot of it has to do with site distance with the county road. There was, it's been, I believe, running it out, you know, in a straight line would have reduced that. And I think that was also part of the county's letters that were submitted with this. So part of the idea was to push it out there to, I, I believe, meet site distance. That was, that was a, a key component of it.
Yeah, and, and I want to add to that because I was involved in that. It's from the previous, the Holt subdivision. That if it was straight, Jerry, it would be coming out further down on the curve on Deuce Road. And it made it so when you looked to the left, you couldn't see, there was not, there was a sight. So the county said it had to come out where that site distance could be met.
Thank you.
That's perfect. Safety, safety is the concern that, that, that answers my question.
And also, you know, there's these flag lots across the street. So instead of it, if it came out straight, you'd be offset. So it takes it and lines it up this way. So more like a four-way intersection instead of, you know, when you're an offset intersection like this and it's like, are you going, am I going safer this way?
Yeah. Like that. Okay, Joel, I think you were next on the questions.
Uh, yeah, uh, thanks you guys. As you guys know, I'm the one that's usually hardest on subdivisions right now. So I kind of feel like you may have watched some of the previous ones I've mentioned because a lot of those addressed the questions I usually have. One quick question after that, what's your timeline on development for this one?
If I could respond, is that, is that, are you, there's the developers timeline, whatever that may be, and then there's the actual approval timeline that's in the, in the.
Basically, my, my question is coming down to when will houses be built and people move in? The reason why I was asking is because, as you did mention, you mentioned our sewer system and we have law enforcement issues, then we need to get law enforcement increased, which is a future conversation we're having. And there's, there's schools need bonds and then growing and things. So these, these issues do need to be addressed and they were talked about. My curiosity is what the timeline is, if you guys are going to be have those built once, you know, at the time when those are just getting finished? Or if we're going to have a, a heavy increase on stress before we're able to get those, those changes made?
Well, if appropriate, from, from the land use perspective, I can say that it is, there's a four-year implementation period to get the subdivision approved. It has to be approved. Of course, there's two phases, so it, it can, we'd have to look at the exact wording, but they generally have that window to implement the, the subdivision and our, to get the plat essentially signed, which means creating the infrastructure prior to signing. Once that occurs, you have lots created. It, it, it depends, I suppose, on, on when the builders make their applications. But for the actual plat to be where you have ready lots to be sold, they have to do it in that, that period. Of course, they could get a time extension of two years. I believe it's two years, but that would be the implementation period to get the plat. You know, basically approved.
What's, what's a normal turnaround time for something like this? Like two years, usually when they get the houses built and people moving in, things like that? Is that, is that a normal period? Or are you talking like 12 months? I mean, just give me a rough idea. It gives me a better idea of, of what we're looking at. So. Oh, it could be a very generalized idea. I just, I'm trying to get, trying to get a handle on the wait with all the subdivisions coming in and, and the wait on our, we're trying to, we have projects moving forward to get these fixed, but I just want to see if we're actually going to be getting ahead of ourselves on the time when people are actually moving in and we have the wait coming in on the, the, that system. Or if we're going to be, you know, getting everything done about the same time. I just, I just want to get a rough idea.
I, I might be able to help. I mean, there, there are statutory timelines that Ben's talking about, which are obviously very important. But if, if you're talking about, I mean, honestly, the fastest this thing could, could really be done before people start occupying homes. Without taking, you know, extreme measures to do this project like during the winter time, wet weather provisions, which would not make sense financially. You know, we would hope to be able to break ground on the infrastructure next spring. And that will probably take six to eight months to complete. And then there'll be some additional stuff that needs to be done in terms of getting approvals and getting plats approved and signed and things like that. So the plat would probably record toward the end of next year at the earliest. And then, you know, and then you have to go through permitting time and then build houses. I wouldn't think that, that anybody would, you know, be moving into the neighborhood in significant numbers until a give or take two years from now.
Okay. And just to confirm, Denise, we're looking about a two to three year timeline. Did you actually get that sewer plant completed, right?
Exactly. And, and the, the sewer plant at this time does have capacity for this subdivision.
Yes, I get that, but we're growing at a pretty fast rate here. That's my concern. And it gives us enough time, it sounds like, for law enforcement, every, all my other concerns. So I appreciate it. So.
Thank you. Good question, Joel. Can we bring it back to the main screen so I can see if there's anybody else which to speak? All right, Paul.
Yeah, just appreciate the overview that we're getting here today. Need to step back for me. You'd mentioned major versus minor collectors. With I believe Curran Creek being a major collector and Sweetwater, was that the minor collector? What, what do those mean? How, how big of a street is that? What's, what would be something comparable in Estacada now?
Um, you want to take it, Ben, or you, okay. A major collector is, so the first part of Curran Creek that has been started over on the other side. So another major collector, Taylor is, Taylor is like Sixth, Sixth Street that goes through town, Broadway, Main. Those are major collectors. And then you have minor collectors that, you know, most of the streets and subdivisions are local roads. They're serving that subdivision, but occasionally you have minor collectors. The TSP says you have to have minor collectors. And so those are a little bit smaller. They aren't going to have as much traffic as a major collector. And then we have certain standards decide, defined for each one. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, that helps, that helps. So Curran Creek, is that going to tie into Curran Creek in Cascadia Ridge?
Yes.
No. And then the timeline for the infrastructure, Dave, is that what you were saying? Could be
Two years.
After approval and once spring gets going? Okay. And then what about then, Spring or Sweetwater? Will that connect to anything too? It looks like it lines up real nicely with Cemetery.
It, it does, but Cemetery will never be a through street. So people coming, I'm going to, since you asked about Curran Creek and the subdivision on the hill, people can come out, will be able to come out that way. And the major collector road, Curran Creek, is going to go all the way to Eagle Creek Road through the other subdivisions. Okay? But maybe the map, Ben, can you put that map up there? And then the minor collector, which is Sweetbrier, they can have that option to go up to Deuce and then out to the highway. If they were going to be going, for example, to Clackamas, they might want, not want to go through all the subdivision. So hold on just a second. Okay, yeah, right there. Can you show how it goes all the way to the, yeah?
Yeah, so the, the major collector, which is Curran Creek Drive. You can see it coming in through Faraday, you know, from the west. And then it basically just courses through to the development and then it kind of runs off the map, but you can see, once it crosses Curran Creek, it heads towards Eagle Creek. So that'll all be the major collector. And then, you know, the Sweetwater Road will connect Deuce Road to Curran Creek and that'll be the minor collector. You can see the alignment right there.
Yeah, that helps, that helps. I was trying to piece those together. That's what I was looking for.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And on the main screen, there we go. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, council for that. Do we have any speaker request forms in opposition or favor or neutral?
I don't see any hands raised in the audience.
Okay, great. Does the staff wish to have any questions answered or anything more to add? No? Okay. We will now reopen the Estacada City Council meeting and ask for a motion to approve with conditions or deny the application. Is there, okay, we'll come out of this and we'll go back into the city council. And I guess we'll get a motion right now. So do I have a motion to accept with the planning commission's recommendations or? What are we doing?
I moved to approve the subdivision with the planning commission's recommendations.
Okay, I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, people, and thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, now, need to do it all over again, guys. All right, we are now going to close the city council meeting and open the public hearing. For zone change position and conditional use on 2021 dash zero one dash ZC. Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte? No? Okay, the council will now hear the staff report on this proposal.
Okay, and that one is from me. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so you should all now be able to see the PowerPoint. Can somebody nod and confirm that? Thank you.
Taylor, do you have a volume control there that you can turn up a little bit? Okay, I can barely hear you.
Oh, that's weird. I don't. Is it any better right now?
Uh, yeah, it sounds a little bit higher.
Yeah, let me see if I can prop my computer up. And I'll just try to yell a little bit. Okay. Okay, so 2021 dash oh one dash ZC is a zone change partition and a conditional use, all rolled together into the same application. The council's decision tonight, this is the second of two public hearings. Tonight is the final decision. Unless appealed to Luba. So the request and applicable approval criteria, let me know if, please stop me if I, if you can't hear something that I've just said. So the request is, like I said, a zone change. That's from the M1 Light Industrial to the HC Highway Commercial Zone. The partition would create two lots and the conditional use is for a multi-tenant commercial building on the eastern lot, which is a conditional use in the highway commercial zone. And then the applicable, applicable criteria are listed out over here. These are the different chapters of the municipal code that apply to this decision. Okay, the applicant is IBEX Investments. The owner of this location, this franchise is Peter Nelson and their representative here today with us is Jeff Tross. And the property that we're talking about is 30355 Veterans Boulevard. It's the property that's in the southwestern corner of River Mill Road and Veterans Boulevard. Like I said, the current zone is M1 Light Industrial and the proposed zone is Highway Commercial. A little bit about the site. It is about 1.35 acres in area. There is undeveloped. It is undeveloped and it's adjacent to Timber Park here to its west. You can see all these trees. Undeveloped and incorporated property zone for highway commercial uses to its east. Undeveloped incorporated property zone for outdoor commercial to its north. And then some developed properties that are zoned industrial to the south. There are no sidewalks around the property's frontages, so it will require those frontage improvements upon development. There's no rare or unique natural resources or cultural features on the site. And there is an existing sewer line and public water available in Veterans and enough capacity in the systems to serve the anticipated development. So the proposed zone change, one of the intentions of the zone change is to allow the Pacific Pride Cardlock Fuel Station to relocate from its current location on Second Avenue, which is in the downtown zone, to a more appropriate and I, I think the representative, Mr. Tross here will explain also how it will be a safer location for this use, which is a, or for this type of, yeah, this type of station, which is very like commercial and industrial oriented. Different from your regular gas station that serves the general public. And then the other part of their plan is that the, the conditional use, multi-tenant building could not be allowed in the M1 zone because its primary use would not be an industrial use. But that type of development can also be allowed in the highway commercial zone as a conditional use. So the zone change would make both of these things possible. And as we can see, the, the adjacent zoning to, you know, this whole area to the, to the east, all along the highway is also zoned highway commercial. So it's not like it would be just a random parcel in the, in the middle of nowhere that would zone that. And then the proposed partition, like I said. Uh, and then the proposed partition, um, like I said, two roughly equal lots, east and west. The western one being slightly larger because at the River Mill Road kind of, uh, slopes diagonally upward. The multi-tenant commercial building that they're proposing would be five units, and we can get a little bit more into the details of the design, which are, um, prescribed in the code section for the highway commercial zone. Um, but it would be five units, and this is the, um, sort of basic preliminary proposed design of the building. So, oh, yeah, we've got the front here and the back. And we'll get into those details later. Um, so what we need the council to do is to, um, review this according to the approval criteria that I listed out earlier. Um, and so I have summarized the applicable pieces of approval criteria and listed them out here. So the first one that applies to all of these types of decisions, all three, the zone change, the, um, partition and the conditional use, is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And so the applicable goal of the comprehensive plan, um, to this proposal, uh, is the economic development, so that's chapter seven of our comp plan, which adopts the findings of the 2019 Economic Opportunities Analysis. Um, and so the purpose of that goal is to diversify and improve the economy of Estacada. And so that EOA included a buildable lands inventory, a, um, and, and employment forecast, um, computations of employment land demand, a policy analysis, and implementation strategies. And part of all of that, the part of that that's particularly relevant here, um, is that those findings showed that the city had significantly more land zoned for industrial uses than would be needed to meet the 20-year projected need. So, uh, all that to say, this 1.35 acre area could be rezoned to a different kind of employment zone without detrimentally impacting the city's industrial land supply. And may indeed, uh, actually contribute to the city's overall economic development, having this new multi-tenant commercial building available, um, to new or relocating businesses. Um, and having the, the Cardlock Fuel Station, which, um, is, may not be an appropriate use for a downtown zone, have it relocate somewhere that makes more sense and open up that property downtown for something that would be safer and more appropriate for the downtown zone. Um, another approval criteria we have to look at for all of these types of application are adequate system capacities, so that's our city services and our transportation system. Sewer and water systems do have enough capacity to accommodate the development. They're already available in the adjacent streets. There's no change to our police or fire service. They already serve, um, we're already within the district. And, um, the transportation system capacity was analyzed in the traffic study that they submitted. Um, it's in Exhibit Three. And that indeed showed that the proposed zone change and the uses proposed can be accommodated by the current and planned transportation system. I think Mr. Tross, uh, could, if desired, talk a little bit more about, um, how the, the Cardlock Fuel Station specifically is, um, uniquely, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that it's, it has no impact, but, uh, uniquely less impactful on, um, traffic volumes, especially during peak times of the day, because the types of customers that come into a, a fuel station are, you know, um, these trucking companies or, or whatever, who, uh, usually because of their routes are intentionally, uh, like avoiding rush hours and stuff like that. So I think he can talk a little bit more about that, but, um, the finding was indeed that the transportation system can accommodate, uh, the, um, anticipated, um, traffic impacts. One of the approval criteria specific to land partitions is, um, site access. Where am I here? There we go. Um, so the code section about site access says that when a lot abuts two streets of different classifications, which is the case here, we have River Mill Road, which is a collector, and then Veterans, which is a local street, so, um, River Mill is the higher classification. So, um, the code says that the access point should go to the road of lower cap, classification. So it would tell us that the eastern parcel should take access from Veterans. However, that section also provides for that standard to be modified or waived due to conditions that make it impractical, impractical to access the lower classification street. And in this case, um, the applicant is not proposing for the general commercial and customer traffic to take access from River Mill. We see in their plans that they have service doors for each of those units in the multi-tenant building. Um, service doors provided in the rear of the building, so that back lot would have secondary access from the, the shared driveway there on River Mill. That would be a secondary access for service vehicles via the shared driveway that would also serve the fuel station. So the, the Planning Commission agreed that, um, having, having that secondary access for the eastern lot was, um, reasonable, and they included, um, a, a condition of approval in there that, um, that would be fine so long as the applicant, uh, posted signage that was directing the customers um, to use that entrance on Veterans. Okay, another approval criteria for land partitions, um, street and frontage improvements, so, uh, something a little bit wonky about River Mill Road is that the center 40 feet of the right-of-way falls under the Clackamas County jurisdiction, while the 10 feet of right-of-way on the 10 out, outer feet of right-of-way, so a total of 20. So the 10 feet of right-of-way that front the subject property falls under the city's jurisdiction. So because of this, um, half-street improvements will be designed to county standards for the 20 feet in the, from the center line in, um, and then to city standards from the, you know, for the remaining 10 feet, um, which is fine and is, actually results in the same thing that it would be if it was just designed to city standards anyway. Um, but they will have to go through the county for permitting and stuff, so, um, that, we just needed to make sure that that's in there, and they're aware that they need to go through the county for that county jurisdiction, um, area. So it's gonna be 20 feet of half-street pavement, um, and then five-foot sidewalks, curb, streetlights, um, and a 10-foot public utility easement along the entire, entire frontage. Um, they don't need to dedicate any more right-of-way. The 60-foot right-of-way width is already adequate. And then Veterans Boulevard is all under the city's jurisdiction, makes it easier for everyone. Um, and it'll be designed to a local street. Um, there's already adequate right-of-way width there also, and they'll just need to put in the curbs, sidewalks, streetlights, and of course, the 10-foot public utility easement there. Okay, moving on to the conditional use approval criteria, um, one of those is site suitability. So the characteristics of the site need to be suitable for the proposed use considering the size, shape, location, topography, existence of improvements and natural features. Um, so the property is, as I mentioned, undeveloped. It's pretty much flat, roughly rectangular. Um, currently unoccupied. Services are available to be established at the site. It is located adjacent to other properties that are zoned for highway-oriented commercial uses as well as, um, properties that are zoned for light industrial uses to the south and for outdoor commercial uses to the north. No hazards or dangerous soils identified on the Dogami Hazards Map, and it is about 2,000 feet from Clackamas River to the southwest. Um, so all of that is to say, there's, there's nothing that was found to indicate that the site would not be suitable for their proposal. The next conditional use approval criteria that we need to look at are vicinity impacts. So, um, that code section says that the proposed use cannot, um, alter or should not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which, um, substantially limits or impairs or precludes the use of any of those surrounding properties for, um, the primary uses that, um, they are, that are listed in their zone as being allowed outright in that underlying district. So, um, the area within a quarter mile of this property is characterized by light industrial and highway-oriented commercial uses, as we've mentioned, as well as, um, unincorporated rural residential uses, you know, across River, River Mill Road to the northwest. Those, these lots are all, um, not yet annexed and, um, have some homes and outbuildings on them. Uh, but are designated in the comprehensive plan map as, to be zoned with, zoned as, um, light industrial whenever they do come into city limits, so. Um, so all that to say, considering, you know, the nearby and adjacent uses, um, a five-tenant highway-oriented commercial building in this location would, would not be out of character, um, with any of the adjacent properties, nor with the designated use, uh, use categories of, um, all of the properties that are within that quarter mile. Okay, and then another conditional use approval criteria are the development standards for the highway commercial zone. So, uh, one of the, um, one of the, let's see, one of the requirements of, okay, so, um, multi-tenant commercial buildings are listed in the highway commercial zone as a conditional use that can be allowed, um, if the, um, really if the Planning Commission approves it. Usually it doesn't go all the way to the city council, um, but this one is attached to, um, a zone change and partition, which do, actually partitions don't either, um, but zone changes do. So it's coming, it's coming your way. So, uh, yeah, conditional uses are, um, uses that may be allowed in a zone if the Planning Commission approves them to be, um, finds that they meet all of the applicable approval criteria. Um, and our code is really specific about multi-tenant commercial buildings in the highway commercial zone because, um, and I think I recall some conversations from a couple of years ago now, um, when ordinance 2019005 was going through creating the highway commercial zone, where these, uh, design standards were included under the, the, you know, the use section that allows for multi-ten, multi-tenant commercial buildings um, to prevent basically, um, ugly, like ugly, um, strip mall type development from fluttering up, um, basically the, the highway. You know, you're coming into Estacada, um, and I think the conversation was, was pretty much boiled down to, we're, we have people driving into Estacada. We, we don't want them to, to see kind of this sort of barrage of just unattractive strip mall development. You know, we want there to be some, um, yeah, some, some design standards that prevent, prevent that from being what the first thing that people see when they come into Estacada. So anyway, that, that's just a little bit of background. So, um, that's where these design standards came in, uh, which established that multi-tenant, a, a single building occupied by more than two businesses can be allowed, provided that the building incorporates all of these elements. So, um, I'm not going to read them out here. But, um, the submitted tenant building plans do indeed show, um, a recessed storefront facade, variable heights in the front elevation, um, awnings, uh, transparent elements on the ground floor storefronts, and differentiating building materials. Some of the things that are required by this list are not shown on these preliminary plans. And that might just be because they are very preliminary. You know, they haven't even gotten through land use approval yet, so, um, but, uh, there will be conditions of approval in there that will reiterate these requirements to incorporate all of the elements. So that will include pedestrian amenities like benches, trees, or bike parking, and city approval of the awning color and material. We have a, probably what's, what we'll suggest is that they just pick something from the downtown, um, paint palette. Um, and then verifying that at least 50% of the ground floor facade area is comprised of transparent elements. So making sure there's enough window basically on the ground floor. So, I think that might be the last, yup. Um, so all of that, uh, leads up to 31 recommended conditions of approval, which ensure the following. You've got your sort of basic, um, standard required conditions of approval in here, um, and then some more project-specific ones, like the tenant building needs to incorporate all of those design elements. It can only be occupied with uses that are allowed outright in that highway commercial zone, unless they come back for, uh, a different, separate, um, conditional use, uh, approval. Um, and then having that signage that directs the commercial customer traffic to take access from Veterans Boulevard. So, yup, um, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Anybody have any questions for Taylor? On this? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, um, I will now read, is there, uh, any correspondence regarding this application, Taylor?
No.
No, okay. "I will now read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue." Okay, uh, is the applicant here? I'll be able to sight, uh, yeah, there he is. Okay, so, uh, go ahead and start up.
Hey, thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, nice to be with you this evening. Be nicer to be with you this evening, but I guess this will have to do for tonight. Uh, this is a complex application because of all the various, oh, I should introduce myself first. Thank you. My name is Jeff Tross. I'm a land use and urban planning consultant. Trust Consulting, Inc. is the name of my business. And my office address is 1720 Liberty Street, Southeast Salem, 97302. I'm here tonight.
Do you have a volume, uh, excuse me, just wanna, do you have a volume on your thing? Turn it up just a little bit?
I do. Read better?
A little bit more. I can't, I'm still getting, having trouble hearing you.
Alright.
It might, it might be on your end, Mayor. I can hear him pretty good.
Alright, huh? I can.
I have a double hand, too. I've gotta crank my volume way up.
Okay. I'm up about as high as I can go.
Alright, great.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. So for the record, uh, that's who I am and, and where I'm at. And this is a complex application because of all the various elements involved in it. The comp plan change, zone change, conditional use permit, and the partition with all the design elements that are incorporated into those elements. Taylor has provided an extremely thorough and comprehensive staff report, and her review tonight was an excellent summary. I'm not gonna take the time to go through each and every one of those elements, but to briefly summarize again what this is all about. The proposal is to relocate the Pacific Pride Cardlock Fuel Station, which is over on Second Street, out to the industrial area. And that has a couple of purposes. One is to put it in a more accessible and more appropriate location for the type of traffic that it serves. And it also gets it out of downtown. So when you look at the two thousand eleven downtown plan, it talks about creating a more pedestrian friendly environment with services that are more tuned to pedestrian and visitor usage. And moving a card lock fuel station out of downtown to a more appropriate industrial site certainly does that. A card lock fuel station, which you're probably familiar with, is a self-service facility, which is a special purpose type of facility. It's limited to commercial and industrial customers who basically are under contract to purchase a certain volume of fuel from the card lock facility. It is unattended, it's open twenty-four hours. It serves a clientele that basically uses relatively large amounts of, of fuel, whether it's gasoline or diesel. These may be contractors, service personnel, truckers, people who are on the road a lot and who stop in pretty frequently, once or twice a day or, you know, a few times a week to fuel their vehicles. Often it deals with fleet customers who have a secure place to get fuel that's more industrial oriented than your typical service station that's open to the public. And interestingly enough, the HC zone, which is being proposed here, actually has a specific category for fuel stations. In other words, HC zone provides for service stations, which are what you and I go to in our typical, typical lives. But it also provides for a fuel station, which is exactly what a card lock fuel station is. And I should also mention that the reason the Pacific Pride Cardlock can be self-service is because there's a specific provision in the state fire marshal's code that allows that to take place. The rest of us don't get to do that, but for large scale commercial and industrial customers, they are able to do that. So the idea is that moving it into an industrial area where it serves primarily industrial and large volume commercial customers is more appropriate than in the downtown core, which is, I think, well, well thought of for being renovated and renewed for pedestrian and visitors and access to the river. The location of the existing Pacific Pride is also designated on the downtown plan as a potential new access point between downtown and the river. So it'd be a good idea to get it out of there. The owner says that after the station is relocated, they'll do the environmental cleanup with regards to the underground fuel tanks. And then the site will be available for lease or for sale. So the station is old, the underground tanks no longer meet DEQ standards. The new station will be built with full spill protection, alarms, all the DEQ requirements that may apply to that. And so you'll have a new facility in the community at a location along the highway that is really more attuned to that. Multi-tenant building is just that, it's in an industrial area, so it's going to be available for small industrial uses, small warehousing, storage, manufacturing, as well as service businesses that might provide for the traveling public or the employees in the industrial area. So with that, I'll abbreviate my presentation to you this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does council have any questions regarding this? Not seeing any hands. Well, I think you did a great job. It seems everybody's on the loop here, so that's good. Thank you for that.
You did a great job with the staff report. And by the way, we concur with all the findings and with all the conditions of approval. So I just wanna let you know about that.
Great, thank you. All right, the staff or applicant have any additional comments to make? No?
Nope.
All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will open the city council back up. And then we will take a motion, but I don't know how that's supposed to read. Taylor, how would that read?
There could be the, the motion to, motion to approve with the conditions recommended by the planning commission, motion to approve with conditions modified if, if you wanted to change or add or whatever, any of the conditions, or motion to deny with findings that it didn't meet some approval criteria or a motion to table. I think those are the options.
Okay, great.
I move, I move to approve with the planning, can, planning commission recommendations.
Okay, great, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlewomen. We appreciate the presentation. You guys did a great job and I'm glad we got through that, so thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Yeah. All right, last but not least, guys, we're on the last one here. You know, maybe if we take a few minutes out, anybody have to go to the bathroom or do anything before we move on? I, I figured somebody, so we'll, we'll take about five on this, if that's okay. Thank you.
That was a well timed break, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, those public hearings can take some time. There's Paul, there's Justin, okay, we're all back. So we're on the final one of the public hearing, so I will now close the city council and open the public hearing to the annexation of twenty twenty-one dash zero one annex. Do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? No? Okay, the council now hear the staff report on the proposal.
Okay, that's me again, and this one should, should be very quick. So you should see my PowerPoint here. The file number for this application is twenty twenty-one dash oh one dash annex, not ZC, sorry for that typo. This, once again, is a planning commission recommendation that I'm presenting to the city council. Your decision tonight is final unless appealed. So here we go. The proposal and applicable criteria, so the proposal is to annex one point one five acres of right of way, which are all of the unincorporated parts of southeast Glenn Avenue and southeast Ren Road. I hope you can see my mouse here. This northwest portion of Ren Road is often labeled Glenn Avenue on like tax maps and different documents, and it is sometimes also labeled Ren Road, so that's why. Hence the slash there, and then the rest of it is called Ren Road. It's the same county road. I think it's number twenty-two-two-seven-nine or something. We'll verify that. But yeah, the areas that are white and outlined in that tan, all of those areas are unincorporated, so it is under the Clackamas County jurisdiction. And then like this area that is the lighter tan, that is all right of way that is within the city's jurisdiction. So like for this area, the southern part of Ren Road, the southern half is in city limits and the northern half is in the county jurisdiction and it just complicates the permitting process, basically. The approval criteria that we need to look at is section, chapter sixteen point one-two-four on annexations. So we will look at that. Taking a closer look here at the subject road sections. So most of the adjacent area is, are annexed properties. And that is, that's really how this portion of the road got annexed, is that it was, it came into city limits when this property came into city limits. And so it was really kind of just an oversight, you know, this, this half of the roadway came in when the, when these properties, when this property did, but when these properties over here came in, that half the roadway didn't get included. So a little bit of context on the area that we're looking at. There are, on the, on the southeast side of, we, we're, or sorry, where we're looking at is on the southeast side of the already approved Eagle Ridge subdivisions, phases one and two. So if you can see my mouse moving, this parcel here is part of phase two of Eagle Ridge. And then these parcels here were part of phase one of Eagle Ridge. And then over here to the west is Cemetery Road. So the very farthest eastern portion of the right of way that we're talking about is basically ends at Cemetery Road. By the way, this part of right of way won't ever get developed, pretty much, unless someone with a lot of money comes in and decides to build a bridge over the creek. But having it in the city's jurisdiction means that anyone who does develop that property or, and even if they're not wanting to develop the, anything on the right of way, it just means that they won't have to, and we won't have to coordinate with the county about the permitting around that right of way. Okay, and then also to note is that we have new or anticipated development coming in on the surrounding areas. You all just heard the application for Dugan Estates, phases one and two, which are up to the north of Current Creek here. So on the north side of that section that won't get developed. And if you recall, from just a little earlier tonight, this whole southern area is not proposed to be developed because of the topographical constraints with the creek there. And then we also, we have had a pre-app for a potential development that might happen on these properties here. There was an approved subdivision for these three parcels, but it sounds like they might be going with something different, I don't know. And like I said, the already approved Eagle Ridge subdivisions over here. So basically, annexing this right of way will transfer the permitting authority and maintenance authority to the city from the county. And that means that our standards will apply for any development that abuts the right of way. Frankly, the difference between the county and the city standards is pretty minimal, but there is a difference. And there is, you know, time and coordination that needs to happen between the city and the county and between the applicants in the county and applicants in the city, of course, during those developments. And so bringing the road section into the city limits will basically just streamline the development review process to be what it would be for any normal development application that is entirely within city limits. So it'll save city staff time, save the developer staff, the developer their time, save the county staff time. And it's ultimately bringing a roadway into the city limits that has always been planned to come into city limits whenever it's eligible. So whenever the surrounding properties come into city limits, because it is entirely within the urban growth boundary. So those are the basics, and the approval criteria that we need to consider are, is it located within the UGB? Yes, it is entirely and far into the UGB. Is it contiguous to existing city limits? Yes, I, I showed you that image of those properties that are adjacent that are within city limits. Does the proposed use for the site comply with the comp plan and map? It is right of way, it is public right of way, it is remaining public right of way, so that the use isn't changing. So that's not applicable. And is there adequate capacity of urban services? Once again, this isn't serving, you know, an actual development or a land use other than what it already is, so that's not applicable either, either. And then the availability of services, of course, is also not applicable because it's a road. So, yeah, there are no, no, or conditions of approval recommended with this. Just the recommended approval, and then we do all of the administrative work required for getting that finalized. Any questions on that?
I don't think so, it's still pretty self-explanatory. Any questions from council? Jerry?
Just on the, the whole confusion of the name, so can we get rid of the, the confusion aspect and name it one name and have it be that name in all, on all forms and all maps?
Yeah, I think, I feel like we discussed this recently, Denise, maybe with one of the Eagle Ridge developments. I think if I recall correctly, what's gonna happen is that the north-south section will be Glenn Avenue. And then when it kind of tees, or right now it just turns, but because of the Eagle Ridge, one of the Eagle Ridge phases is gonna take Ren Road and extend it out. So basically Glenn Avenue is gonna tee at Ren Road, and so you'll be able to go both ways on Ren Road. So it'll be Glenn Avenue is the north-south section and then Ren Road will be the, the rest of it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions there? All right, there's no correspondence, because it's us, so I'm not gonna go there. And then I will read the statement. I'm gonna read a statement about the evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue, precludes appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, and the applicant is us, so we're not really going there. And councillors have any other questions before we move on? Okay, there's no speaker request forms, are there any?
I don't see any hands raised, no.
Okay, then we will at this time open, or close the public hearing and open the city council. And I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the annexation.
Okay, so I have a first on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a first and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed? None? Okay, motion passes, thank you. All right, moving right along. We're at council business. The minor modification to conditions to approval of the Cascadia Ridge Phase Six. So who wants to speak to that? Would that be you, Taylor, or?
I think that's me again. Y'all are probably sick of me by now. Okay, and I'm just gonna share my screen. I don't know if it'll really be necessary here, but I have a layout, a like preliminary plat layout of Cascadia Ridge Phase Six. Might be helpful while we're talking about it. So this is a, this is a, a minor modification to a subdivision that was approved in twenty eighteen. Phase six of the Cascadia Ridge developments, it is to the south of Faraday Hills. And the, basically, what happens, what happened is that the, the construction plans for the, for this phase were approved by the city engineer and maybe public works. And so they, they began construction, but then they sort of found out after all of that got started that they sort of found out after all of that got started that um, the uh, sewer, a, a sewer extension was sort of omitted from those plans that was, that was needed to connect to these properties to the east. So um, basically they, they allowed them to move forward with construction without having a sewer extension on that, you know, uh, stubbing to that side of the development. And so the problem is kind of, kind of became like they were so far along in their process that it would be costly and sort of unfairly costly for the developer to you know, kind of make these changes to their plans um, this late in the process. And uh, we had already approved them to start construction. And so the kind of negotiated deal was, okay, they would build us this sewer extension if the city agreed to remove a condition of approval that was included in in the decision file that limited the number of building permits that were allowed to be issued on um, these north-south streets until a connection was made to the streets to the north. Um, and so that condition was included before Faraday Hills was even on our radar. So um, I can't say for sure I wasn't here, but I think the intention of the condition was that they had no idea when those streets were going to connect to something to the north. And so um, they wanted to make sure, actually probably some of you maybe recall why that was included. And maybe just wanted to make sure that there weren't too many homes built on a dead-ending street that they just had no idea when, you know, when it was going to connect through to something. So the negotiated deal that the, the city engineer reviewed and um, thinks is a, you know, is a great solution. And um, I, I would agree because we have Faraday Hills coming in is to remove that condition of approval that limits those, um, the number of building permits that can go in on those streets um, in exchange for the city getting the sewer connection to the east that it needs. The reason that it is not too concerning to remove that condition of approval is that um, Faraday Hills is already, as you know, under construction. So um, they are, they are moving forward with uh, building permits for phase one. And they are um, soon to submit the plat for phase two, which will connect Current Creek Drive um, through and then the subsequent phases would connect those other two streets, which I'm not sure what the names are here. So I think I covered the basics there. I don't know Denise, if you have anything else to add?
Nope, that, that covers it.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a minor modification, meaning just uh, just changes to the some of the specific, you know, engineering-related conditions, um, not any change to like the layout or anything like that.
Okay. Well, let's put it on main screen here. All right, uh, how would you like the motion to read?
I don't know. How does that need to?
No, it would just be to approve the staff recommendation. Because in the recommendation, it states all that and they can make the motion to state all that that's in that recommendation. So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so you heard staff, it's the staff's recommendation, that is the motion. So uh, can I have a motion to do so?
I will make a motion to approve the staff recommendation concerning the minor modification to conditions of approval for Cascadia Ridge.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are now at the uh, appointments for the Arts Commission. I will start off. I've had a look at all of them. I want to thank everybody for applying. There was a lot of applicants. Uh, Joel, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so um, a couple of things. I got a chance to look at what you guys mentioned earlier. Basically, what you guys told me, this was open for seven days. And which is, it's a little, it's really just, this, this contorting and uh, disheartful about the fact that we'd open the position for only seven days for our community to see this. Um, so, and I know there's not much I can do about this now. But I'd like to make a motion to fix it for future use if I could there. Can I make that motion?
Yeah, I think that would be okay for furniture. So you're, what you're saying is later on, we're going to encompass a, 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 a bigger time span?
Yeah, that'd be my motion. It won't be to change what's currently here now. I can't do, I know I can't do much about that now, so. But I'd like to make a motion that would have stipulations in it uh, to, such as that the vacancies, all committee vacancies would have to be open for 30 days. That had to be announced on all, uh, all platforms. Um, and that the announcement would have to, every, every location that's announced that, whether that be the city's front page, whether that be the uh, the um, the Facebook page, whether it be the actual committee page, whether it be the newspaper, that the uh, the open and closed period would actually be uh, would be posted along with that announcement as well. And that that would be our stipulation and guidelines for all announcements going forward. So that way there's time for people to see it, review it, put the application in and get into it, so.
Okay, Paul, did you want to say something to that?
Yeah, um, you know, I think councillor Lickie's got some good ideas here, um, definitely worth considering. I'm, I'm wondering, do we need a motion for that? Or is this something that we can just ask staff to uh, make some recommendations based on or some proposal based on uh, councillor Lickie's recommendations and come back to us maybe next meeting?
I think that's fair. Uh, staff okay with that? Is that something that you can come back to us with a?
The, the reason why I want to make an emotion, so it's not just a recommendation, but we actually have it uh, as a set um, directive from the council. And if it's a motion, it's a set directive that way. So therefore we know that, that that's what needs to be followed. And then, and versus just a recommendation. Uh, because we've had issues before and it's been inconsistent. So I'd like to make sure that we kind of nip it in the butt now and just have it as a, as a solid directive by a, by a motion and an approval.
No, I get you, but I'd like to hear staff put something together for us at the next meeting and we can uh, do this on the next meeting. And that will be the direction we go in. So we, we know that it's on that agenda and we will deal with it at that time. Um, so it doesn't get prolonged or it doesn't get sidetracked. So we, I thank you for that, Joel. That was a good recommendation. And I think staff will work on that. And they'll get back to us with something that works well. And we will uh, uh, put a motion to it and put it on the floor. So I thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Yep. Okay. So back to it. Um, on the Arts Commission, I want to thank everybody who applied. There were several. Um, all very qualified to be a part of that, and I appreciate that. Um, on uh, the Arts Commission, my first two picks were uh, Deborah. I think her name is Vendetta, is that it? Okay, and then uh, I would like to see Nicole Merrick be a part of it since she applied and was so interested in being a part of the city. I think this was a good time to bring her in and kind of see how things go and start the process. So that was my two recommendations. I don't know how council feels about that. Any words from council on this? Is that? I'm asking your opinion.
I, I'm good with it, Mayor.
Okay. All right, great. So, and then on the DEIC, I picked Jennifer uh, Strickland, I think is her name. Uh, she showed a real interest in being part of the process as well. So I picked her for that. Is that? Okay, yeah, Jerry, go ahead.
I, I wanna, I wanna recommend Kimberly Abels because uh, the DEIC was uh, initially brought to our attention by Kimberly Abels when she was on city council. Um, I think she would be an amazing uh, addition to uh, the DEIC uh, would get, would help give that uh, committee a little bit more structure and a little bit more uh, direction. The committee's doing a, they're, they're doing a great job, but uh, there are some needs and uh, I think Kimberly Abels is the most qualified person for that, to fill that role.
I, I believe you're right on the Kimberly Abels. I, I do think she's qualified, but at the same time, I'm looking to put people in that have been, you know, haven't been a part of the process that are now wanting to be a part. And I think that letting new people try this and be a part of the system is giving us an opportunity to, to bring this to a broader, you know, uh, uh, amount of people. I don't know, Joel, what do you think?
I, I'm actually right there with you, Mayor, is bringing in new people, um, getting the community more involved with a different set of people. So um, while Kimberly has done a great job getting off the ground, it's a good time to hand it on to uh, to those out there in the community that want to have a diverse piece in there as well and have a piece in the community. So this gives them a chance to jump in and go.
Okay. Uh, Paul, did you want some?
Um, I think two great candidates as well. I would uh, tend to agree more with what Jerry was saying though, with Kimberly's passion um, and direction to get things going on there. I think she'd be a great benefit to the committee.
Okay, so let's just do this another way here. On the DEIC, uh, let's just uh, get a, a hand raise of Kimberly Abels. So I know. So I have three. And let's get a hand raised for Jennifer Strickland. So it's a three-on-three. Uh, how do we deal with this? Denise?
Unless, unless someone can convince uh, a change, I think, Mary, you have the uh, the authority to appoint. It is with consensus of the council, so uh, you know, maybe just talk it out a little bit longer and try to not a lot longer, but a little bit longer.
Okay. You got your hand up, Jerry?
So um, on, on any other committee that's been established, I would have absolutely no problem with uh, you know, getting new blood in there. But this committee is just being established. Um, I honestly think that we need to, we need to put the most qualified people in position um, that we can at this point, because this committee is, is just getting established, doesn't have a good foothold. And I think we would be doing an injustice, not that Jenny wouldn't be a great pick. I just think that Kimberly really knows what she's doing. She's already, you know, pay, played such a big role in getting the ball rolling. I think she would be a better fit for what we need right now.
Anybody else, Joel?
And um, when it comes to the DEIC, I don't think it's someone, we need someone that's qualified. I think we need someone that has the voice in there. So the qualifications is not what I'm looking at. I'm looking at getting somebody new that, that wants to get their voice out in there into the community. And that's why I thought that Jennifer was a good selection because Kimberly's had her chance to put, to put her voice out there by being on uh, an appointed council member and by helping getting that, that committee going. And the committee will, the, the committee will find its way as far as establishing itself. It's got city staff there to help guide it on its, on how to structure itself. But having more voices from the community that haven't had a chance to put in there, I think is absolutely critical.
Any charity? Did you want to say something?
Um, yeah, I just, I think I kind of, it's more of a question, both great candidates, but I think didn't Kimberly Abels first initially apply for the DEIC and then removed her application during the initial process?
No.
No? Okay, I thought I saw her when she initially.
I don't think so. I don't think she.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I'm chiming in. Um, she, she did apply and then um, temporarily moved out of um, cit, or school district limits while they were, while their house was being built. And then it sounds like she is back in the district, so.
Okay, I just, yeah, I thought I'd seen it. And I mean, it just was like, well, she initially applied and then pulled out, but I didn't know the circumstances behind it. But again, um, you know, I'm just looking at um, you know, somebody to be consistent and you know. Uh, I, I do, I, I think they're both, it's a, it's a tough choice because they're both great applicants. So um, I think my decision's going to remain the same right now.
Well, somebody's gonna have to give a little. We're both on the same page because I, I'm still with Jennifer, so. More discussion?
If it doesn't go anywhere, could we postpone this vote till the next meeting when we might have seven people in attendance?
Oh, we could do that.
Oh, yeah, but the mayor does have a right to to appoint. I mean, that's, that's his right.
This committee does state it's appointed by the council.
Oh, really?
It does.
Appointed by the council with consensus of, appointed by the mayor with consensus of the council.
No, this one's just the city council. All the other ones do say mayor.
Yeah, yeah, actually I do remember that being put in there.
It is strange.
Yeah, we can wait, hold off till we have seven.
All right.
So did we come to a conclusion on the first vote, that Arts Commission?
Yeah, on the Arts Commission, we.
Everybody was in agreement? Okay.
Yeah. And that was Deborah Vendetta and Nicole McMerrick.
Okay.
So, well, I got a question then. If this is appointed by the council, isn't that contradictory to what our city charter says? That, the city charter, if I believe, says it's the, um, that the mayor is supposed to appoint. And then they have, have the consensus of the council behind it. Shouldn't that override our, anything below it?
There's different for our committees, like the budget committee has to be appointed by the council. And so it's just how it's written in your ordinance. Your ordinances are your rules. And so I think the library board might be another one, but there are a few of our committees that are appointed by the city council and not by the mayor. So it, it just depends how it's written into the code.
All right, so we put that off until we have seven on the next one. So thank you for that. We are in the uh, second consideration for ordinance 2021 dash 005, an ordinance of the city investigating imposing a 3% tax on the sale of marijuana items by a marijuana retailer and referring ordinance to voters for approval. So what do we need on this one? Just a motion? To accept?
Just a motion to approve for the second.
Can I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance 2021 dash 005 for the second consideration.
Okay, so first, do I have a second?
Second.
The first and the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving along. We are at the uh, next citizen and community group comment. Do I have anybody in the holder?
Sorry about that. Um, no, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great, thank you. So now we're at the mayor council reports and comments. I will start off with you, Jerry.
Thank you, staff. Amazing job again, uh, as always. Thank you guys for uh, showing up on a Zoom meeting. And we had a, I think at one point we were up to 25 people in the audience, which was pretty cool. Yeah, thank you guys. Uh, stay cool this week. It's gonna be hot.
Great, thank you. Uh, Joel?
Thanks to guys. It's a long meeting today, lots of, uh, lots to get through there. As you guys know, I'm passionate about things and I'm passionate about doing things certain way, especially when I have constituents behind me, you know, uh, letting me know about certain things and uh, consistency and action is, is important to me. So um, when I see something out of place, I want to get it fixed. The, uh, as far as the heat coming up, yeah, there's three uh, days over 100 degrees. The uh, there will be a cooling center in the city for Esticated Community Watch, uh, the down at the uh, community center. So um, if someone needs to uh, to be go to cool off, that's a good place to go. And I believe that they are also doing um, wa, uh, welfare checks for people like uh, that have family from out of the area that want to have their, uh, maybe an elderly uh, grandparent or something checked on. Um, so that's a good way to contact them as well. Um, so, and uh, this good, good exciting thing is coming in the city. So looking forward to what's coming around the corner. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Joel. Paul?
Uh, thanks for the good discussion and preparation tonight from the staff and the council as well too. And, and uh, really appreciate uh, Esticated Community Watch. I was hoping to hear from you uh, councillor Lickie on, on what you guys were doing. So really appreciate you guys being out there for what's coming up here with the weather.
Thank you, Paul. Charity?
Um, yeah, just what everyone else has said, you know, thank city staff for putting together a, a very large um, packet and for um, and Taylor, I want to thank you for all of your uh, very detailed explanations on everything. You did a really good job and um, you, you break things down really well for me. You, you break things down really well for me, um, to where I can, I can understand them, I'm not, I don't really have a head for all. All of that stuff, that's usually not my purview, so um, if I can understand it, that's, that's great, um. Uh, again.
Yeah, thanks, and you're all, sorry, but yeah, you're all welcome to email me if there's ever things that are like, what are you talking about here?
Yeah.
Um, please, please do email me, so.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate it and I appreciate uh everything else city staff does and um, thanks again councillor Lickie for um. Community watch for putting together that cooling center, that's, that's great to hear, I do, I, I love it that you guys are doing that and that's, that's a good work for the. Community and um, so yeah, stay safe and stay cool everyone and um, I look forward to seeing everyone in person at the next meeting.
Great, thank you Charity, uh Justin?
Uh, yeah, just to echo everybody, I appreciate all the presentations and all the great information, it sounded like a lot of people were uh very prepared. So appreciate all that, appreciate staff and uh stay cool, thanks guys.
Thank you, and again, thank you from me to staff, you did a great job, I appreciate having you there. To answer the questions and make it easier for us all to understand, we appreciate that, Joel, we thank you for your community service out there, knowing what you need to do. With the cooling center and the whole thing, I appreciate that, and with that said, I wanna wish everybody a, a good night, a, a great week, so thank you.